Okay, we're going to call to order the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-one, this meeting of the North Andover Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, in-person attendance of members of the public and board members will be permitted. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting live may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast Channel eight or Verizon Channel twenty-six or online at www.northandovercam.org. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, but despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceeding as soon as possible after the meeting. If the public would like to participate in public hearings but not attend the meeting in person, please email your question or comment prior to or during the meeting to our planning director, Gene Enright, at j e n r i g h t at northandoverma.gov. Question or comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly. Okay. We have a couple of new public hearings, a couple of discussion items.
Roll call.
Yes, thank you. We are partially hybrid still, so we'll do roll call. Thank you.
Kelly Comier?
Here.
Melissa Koenig?
Here.
John Simons?
Here.
Peter Boynton?
Here.
Aetan Gobark?
Here. Okay, and we do have a good amount of members of the public here as well. Looks to be about ten or fifteen people, so that's great. Thank you for coming down. Let's start with new public hearings. Thirty-three, Apple Door Lane, Sean and Laura Delaney. Application for a watershed special permit under Article four, Part five, Section one ninety-five, four point one nine B, and Article ten, Section one ninety-five, ten point seven of the zoning bylaw to authorize an additional twelve-by-twenty-four garage bay. Add second-floor addition over garage and breezeway and expand paved driveway to access new garage bay. Property is located in the R three zoning district.
Great. For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group.
Okay, Gene's gonna tell us a little bit about what we're gonna hear, and then we'll turn to you, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So the site plan is displayed on the screen. All work is proposed within the three hundred and twenty-five-foot non-discharge buffer zone to a wetland area located approximately a hundred and thirty feet from the lot at eleven Apple Door Lane. The proposed stormwater management includes a system of two subsurface drywells which are designed to capture drainage from the proposed additional impervious surface. The first stormwater peer review letter has been received and a response is pending. Department review comments have been received from NAFD Building and Conservation. This is not within Conservation's jurisdiction, so it's not before the Commission. If there's to be any stockpiling activity, I recommend that that location be shown on the plan in the future.
Okay. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. I think Gene covered a lot of it, but as you can see from the site plan, they're proposing a, the existing one, a portion of the existing one-story structure is gonna be increased to a two-story structure, and they're doing a small twelve-by-twenty-four addition on the backside of the existing garage. That will become a garage bay, and that's why we're expanding the driveway on that side so they, they can come in and out of that bay, which will require a driveway extension, and I show a small landscaped retaining wall off of the lot line due to the grade change in that area. I did receive the peer review comments. I did review them. They're, they're, I'm able to address all the concerns in the peer review, but I wanted to meet with the board to see if you might have any additional concerns.
Okay. Um, Gene, what, what, other than the stockpiling, was there anything from Conservation?
No.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments?
I just have a few. Jack, can you just show where the edge of the wetland is? And this is in the watershed, right?
It's, it's in the watershed, so I showed, that, that line's a hundred-foot buffer zone. Can you see that, that dark line?
That's where my cursor is done?
Yeah, right where you.
That's the hundred foot.
Oh, so the, the wetland is on the right, not on the left?
Looking at the house to the right on eleven Apple Door, so it's off-site, but the buffer zone extends.
Okay, but my point is the wetland is?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side, okay.
And so the three twenty-five is the dashed line farthest to the left?
Yeah, okay, I see, okay.
Right, so basically the entire lot, our, my, my client's lot, the entire lot's basically within the three twenty-five, but the, the wetland itself is on number eleven Apple Door Lane, which is to the right of this property.
Okay, yeah. And there's a, it's a two-car garage today?
It's an existing two-car garage today, correct.
And this would be three, and then you're going up on the second floor across all three?
Sean, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, hard to recognize people without masks. Are you, just so I can answer the board, are you going above, on the new garage bay bump out, will be, there'll be living space above it?
That's correct, yeah. We're looking to create a family suite on the second floor over the existing garage and into the new garage.
Like a, like a zoned family suite? So family suite has like a technical definition?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And that's not the case though, right? It's just a bonus room or a family suite?
No, it is, it will be a family suite.
Okay, so that will require permitting through the zoning board appeals as well?
Yep, okay. That's great, I'm glad that people are making use of that. Okay, Melissa, any comments, questions? Peter? Kelly? Okay, so I don't have anything else, so Gene, we wait for the responses to the peer review and then hopefully can make a decision at the next meeting?
Yep, so there's three weeks between meetings, so hopefully we can close those out and I can draft a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, so yeah, as soon as you can get those responses to the peer review back so we can have them look at it and sign off, we can then try to draft a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, thanks. And what's the next meeting date?
December seventh.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Two-one-two Brentwood Circle, John and Michelle Tornello. Application for a watershed special permit under Article four, Part five, Section one ninety-five, four point one nine B, and Article ten, one ninety-five, ten point seven of the zoning bylaw to authorize installation of an in-ground pool, patio, shed, and fencing within the non-dischar, non-discharge zone of the watershed protection district. The property is located in the R one residential zoning district. Okay. Mine as well. Wow, busy guy.
So this is, this is a one-acre site. The development is located fully, again, within the three hundred and twenty-five non-disch, non-discharge buffer zone from the wetland area located at the adjacent ninety-six Brentwood Circle. The proposed stormwater management includes two-foot-deep river rock drainage trenches surrounding the proposed impervious site improvements. A total of one thousand three hundred and fifty-two square feet of additional impervious area is proposed on the site. An operations and maintenance plan has been provided, and the proposal includes a cockroach style filter system. I will say that one abutter reached out, so when facing the front of the house, the abutter to the left was concerned where the proposed drainage is from when the pool gets drained down. And so, Jack, if you could specify, I know the application points to southeast, which would be to the, again, facing the house, to the right of the house.
Correct.
So I just wanna be real specific where that's gonna discharge, because they were concerned if it was closer to the lot line.
And if you could talk a little bit about how the, um, the additional impervious space is dealt with?
Yep.
That'd be great.
Just to, for the record, Jack Sullivan, owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. This project is within a grass backyard now. There's gonna be no trees cut as part of this project as well, that should be noted. It's, it's fairly level with the in-ground pool, the, the paver patio. Off the backside of the patio, we're putting in the river rock. It would be four feet wide by two feet deep, so any drainage coming off the patio would go into that area and then recharge into the ground. And for the shed as well, off the roof, the drip line of the, the roof, we provided the same river rock. It's low maintenance. And part of the peer review asked for an operation and maintenance plan for, for the drainage, which I can provide. It's pretty simple. With the cartridge system, that's what everyone's going with, with pools now, so there's, there's no backwashing or anything like that, so it's an, it's an environmentally sensitive pool. The wetlands are well off-site. Again, I show it on the plan, I cut off, but it's on an abutting property. I show the hundred-foot buffer line, it does, it does not come onto this property at all, so. And as Gene stated, we did provide an operation maintenance plan for the shutdown on this pool, and everything will, if, if, if water has to be drained, it can be drained into the, the river rock on the back edge of the patio, or it could be discharged on the lawn away from any of the abutting properties and allow it to infiltrate back into the ground. Again, I did receive a peer review. It looked pretty straightforward, and I'd be able to address the comments for the next meeting.
Cutting proposed for the shed, correct?
It's within, it's within the tree line, but I, I have the, I'm locating the overt, the canopy of the trees. John, are you here? John, are you cutting any trees to put in the shed?
I was only planning on doing the branches, Brett, just so we can.
Okay, so there might be some limbing of some branches, but no tree removal?
Okay. Um, and Gene, so this is also outside of Conservation, correct?
Yes.
And any comments from any departments that need to be addressed?
No.
Okay. Any board member questions or comments?
Comments from the engineer, was there anything that was substantive, or is it all sort of pro forma stuff?
Yeah, all surmountable. One of them was to clarify whether the tree cutting was required for the shed, but I think he'll be able to respond to everything else pretty easily.
Yeah, okay.
And again, I just, I don't know that this abutter is here, but I did visit with the abutter, so, Jack, I wanna be clear on the discharge, because I would feel we need to condition that. This sits much higher than his house, so the elevation is above, and the application specifies southeast, so in my opinion, that would be on the, when you're facing the house to the right side of the pool.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
So let's make sure that's clear on the plans and also clear in our, I don't know, in the decision that we condition that.
I'll, I'll add it graphically to the plan and label it, just so there's a record of it.
That would be great.
Because it all slopes towards his property, so the further it starts away from his property, the, it won't impact it.
That makes sense.
Okay, so same thing, we can hope to have your comments back as soon as possible to our, to the peer review, get that squared away, and then have, try to make a decision for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Forty-five Catuah Street, Ben Osgood. Discussion regarding access to the frontage of an undeveloped lot. Map twenty-three, Lot eighty-one. If anybody who is here that just had a meeting, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to head out, that's okay too.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Okay, forty-five Catuah Street.
Somewhat the locus here, to make sure everybody's aware of what we're, the location. And so on this locus, you can see to the top portion of the locus is Village Green, and there's a street called Leyden Street that kind of turns into Kingston and is on paper down to Catuah Street. So there's the bend of Catuah. This is the section that comes off of Andover Street, Route one twenty-five intersection with Burke Real Estate, that small little white house on Andover Street. So as you come down Catuah Street at the bend, you'll see map twenty-three, Lot eighty-one. It's an eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty-four square foot lot. It's undeveloped at this time. And so there's an application for a notice of intent to construct a single-family home with a wetland crossing currently before the Conservation Commission. It was recently brought to my attention that the undeveloped lot does not currently have constructed access to the frontage. I requested that the engineer, Ben Osgood, come to the meeting tonight to discuss the issue with the board. An email from the Conservation Commission member, Joseph Lynch, dated October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one, is included in your packet, and it states that he has done some registry of deeds research and discovered that this portion of Catuah Street and Leyden Street are not public ways. A portion of Catuah Street was accepted as a public way at a nineteen fifty-one annual town meeting, but only for the first hundred and sixty feet from Andover Street. In his opinion, that makes the frontage at forty-five Catuah Street a private way. John Bojese has submitted a letter supporting the proposed twelve-foot-wide driveway as identified on the plan set for access to the existing lot. He notes that all maintenance of his, of this access way, including but not limited to pavement, aluminum box culvert, and wing walls, will be the responsibility of the homeowner. However, with regards to the question of lot frontage, John Bojese has communicated to the Conservation Commission that it does not fall under the Department of Public Works jurisdiction and advised that input from planning and/or zoning board should be requested regarding the issue. And so those emails and communications from John Bojese are included in your packet.
And where is the proposed driveway?
So I'll bring up the plan set now. I'll bring up the presentation plan that Ben is gonna speak to, but you can see the undeveloped lot, the house sits to the rear, the driveway kind of snakes across the wetland crossing to Catuah, but to get to Catuah, it would have to cross a small portion of Leyden.
Of the paper street, Leyden?
They're both on a registry plan, so they're both listed. They just, they weren't accepted, and they're not constructed, but they do show in a registry plan.
Okay, but there's no actual street there right now?
And not a constructed street.
Right, okay.
Right then, so.
So I guess we're here to kind of see what role, if any, the planning board needs to take in this, because if we do have some role, it probably should come before Conservation. If we don't have a role, then we don't have a role, so I guess that's what we're here to talk about. Ben, what would you like to tell us about what, what's going on?
Good evening, my name's Ben Osgood, Jr., engineer with Ranger Engineering Group out of Salem, New Hampshire. I think Gene summed it up, we're in front of the Conservation Commission, the question has been raised. So I've done a little bit of research, you know, about the property. This property was created on a Form A plan in nineteen eighty-five. In nineteen eighty-five, Catuah Street existed as it does now. So essentially, there hasn't been any change, or hasn't been any reduction in the roadway. This is where the roadway was, and this is where the, the lot was, this is how the lot was created. Now, your subdivision regulation, two-five-five dash two-point-five, roadway improvements, adequate access from a public way, where the street system within a subdivision does not connect with or have, in the opinion of the board, adequate access from a town, county, or state way, the board may require, as a condition of approval, a plan that such adequate access be provided by the applicant and/or that the applicant make physical improvements to and within such a way of access from the boundary of the subdivision to the way. So, I mean, what's that saying, is you need to have access on to a constructed way. You know, Mr. Bojese, he looked at the plan, he said the driveway, a twelve-foot driveway, it was adequate for the property. You know, I think it's an adequate access to this piece of property. And I think that's borne out by the fact that this is the way the roadway existed when the plan was submitted to the planning board, and it was signed off as such, and it hasn't been changed since then, and that was July fifth, nineteen eighty-four, so.
So it was approved as an A and R without access to the frontage?
Correct. Plan number nine-five-eight-eight.
Nine-five-eight-eight.
How could, how could it be an A and R with no actual frontage?
Yeah, I don't understand, there's no product from public way.
So, knowing town history, there was a, they were developing this piece of land here. There was a real fear that Leyden Street, which comes out right across from the Richdale, can continue down if constructed and connected to Catuah, and then Catuah was constructed all the way down to the Waverly Road intersection. There was a real fear that there wouldn't, there'd be a, you know, a shortcut instead of coming down, going down Peter Street, taking a right at the light and heading down Waverly Road. You could turn in here and you could go right down to Waverly Road. You know, at the time, there wasn't as much, you know, there was a lot of, more, there was more open land in the area, there wasn't even a light at Waverly Road at the other end of Catuah Street, so people were really afraid that that was gonna happen, so they left this piece undeveloped and they, actually, there's still a pile of dirt in the middle of the road down Catuah Street to keep people from going through.
So, let me ask this, so it's fair to say that there's no actual access right now to any built ways?
It's, it's right there. If you look, this.
Is there, no, no, right now, like right now, is there a driveway that would go on to the, if you wanted to get on the property today, is there a driveway?
Well, there's just, you have to go over the land, there's no driveway, it's just there's some grass and some brush and.
Right, okay, so it, it seems like the issue is, when I, you know, read the emails from the Conservation, and it's there suggested, the one emailer was suggesting you should have to build up the roadway, stuff like that, that's, you know, if these are non-public roads and, you know, part of the subdivision, right, and billing it up to, up to the standard. Another possible solution is also just building a driveway. I think that's what DPW was comfortable with, right, Gene? That was, the context of the email was that you could just do a subdivision just for the roadway, not do all the other stuff required, you know, use waivers, and just build a driveway. But it seems like something is necessary, otherwise there's no access, actual access to the property. That's just, just in my head, what I'm thinking. John, have you seen something like this?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm thinking the same thing, and believe it or not, this even preceded me, so.
Whoa.
I don't, I can't take credit for it, but.
That's an old plan.
I guess the part I don't understand is, what is the actual part of Catuah that's the public way, and what's the ownership of the piece between the paved part of Catuah and Kingston Street?
So Catuah Street is just a way, it's a private way, open to the public. That piece between Catuah and Kingston Street is actually Leyden. It was somewhat constructed. I remember when I was a kid, you used to be able to go through there, it was kind of a grass trail. The wetlands have expanded and kind of washed out the pipe, so you can't get through there, but it's an undeveloped roadway that could potentially, everybody has rights over it because they're part of the subdivision, they would have the right to go over it if it was improved.
But who owns it? I mean, it was never constructed, doesn't the ownership revert to the people on either side?
Right, right.
I, I believe you're right, I mean, that, that may be the case. I mean, they may own to the center line, so in fact, this lot may come out to the center line, you know, and the other lots from across the street may come out to the center line.
So could you build this driveway without getting easements from them? If they, if that goes, does the driveway go over Leyden? It does, right?
The driveway goes over the way that's in front of this property, but everybody has a right to improve that way. So if you're at a, if you're a private, I'm sure you've seen this, if you own a piece of land on a private way, and the street comes down and it doesn't quite go to your property, you can extend that street down in front of somebody else's property to get to yours, because you have an access right over that land when the, the.
And then you would have responsibility for maintaining it?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, the town actually doesn't have any responsibility to maintain Catuah Street, because it's a private way.
Okay, so.
But I don't know what, the other point here is, what does a subdivision application that creates this plan do for us when there's already a Form A plan, we're building access to, you know, the paved area that's in front of our lot? I mean, it isn't, you know, it's a little unusual, but if you go out on Dale Street, there are places where the right of, right-of-way is two, three hundred feet wide, and the road's on one side, and people have long driveways going up to their property, because they, you know, move the roadway at one point in time. You know, it's just, this is a very wide right-of-way in this area, and it has a little more of a gap to get from the edge of pavement on to the property.
Well, what do the, I guess, I mean, I think there are some logistical hurdles that need to be figured out, but I guess, when you come down to reality, what do the neighbors want? I mean, if everybody wants the same thing, then it seems like there should be a way to make it happen, I'm just not exactly sure yet what that way is, but if people.
Well, I don't think the neighbors have any say, we have a right to use the way, it's in our deed that, you know, you have the right to use the ways that are part of the subdivision, and this original property, the roadways were laid out in nineteen twenty-four and encompassed the, the condominiums that are there, you know, all the streets, Brewster Street, all the way down Dartmouth Street, it was a, you know, very large area that was developed.
I guess I'm confused, it's a, how can you, is it a subdivision, or is it a Form A, or is it both?
It was originally laid out as just a plan in nineteen twenty-four, there was no such thing as subdivision back then. It was replatted as an A and R plan in nineteen eighty-five, or, what did I say, nineteen eighty, eighty-four?
From this plan to how it exists today, that A and R plan, I didn't locate that, but this is the nineteen twenty-four plan that he's referring to.
Can we see the A and R plan, do you have that?
Yeah. Zoning has not changed since then? And the roadway hasn't changed since then?
So the lot in question is possible eight on this A and R plan?
Right.
And that's why I'm saying it has to cross Leyden to get to Catuah.
Gene, is the A and R online, if I can see?
It is, it was just, just sent today, just right now, hand it out. So I'll add it to the packet in the morning, it'll be online. Thank you.
I don't understand how we have an A and R here. Is he, for that, just one lot? I mean, it doesn't have frontage.
It was for a group of lots.
Right.
It's for a group of lots.
But they were, they were already there, weren't they?
They were, they were there.
Was there a subdivision approved for Catuah Street?
No, 'cause it was all done as an A and R, because the roads were all there, they had, the roads.
Catuah Street was there?
Right. I don't know when it was actually constructed, I'm really not sure, but I, I know parts of it were constructed a very long time ago, but I don't know exactly when.
So were all those houses built around nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five?
No, I found some that were built in nineteen fifty-eight. And I think the road at one time.
So why would it have to be Form A in nineteen eighty-four if the houses were built in nineteen fifty-eight?
Well, not all the houses were built in nineteen fifty-eight, some were, but this section where this lot resides and the adjoining houses were built in, you know, nineteen eighty-four. Some were built in nineteen eighty-three, that time, there's a bunch of plans.
Yeah.
And the problem was, the lots that were created in nineteen twenty-four didn't need zoning in nineteen eighty-four. And the problem was, the lots that were created in 1924 didn't meet zoning in 1984, so they did a Form A, um, to make conforming lots to the zoning, which since then has not changed.
Doesn't necessarily mean it's a buildable lot. I mean, I think the problem can be cured.
So, the proposed house would meet all setbacks and zoning?
Yes.
See, that's, that's what's confusing me, like, if you were to do an A and R with this today, we couldn't approve it, because it doesn't have frontage or adequate access. But we're saying that it's a lot that already exists, and then, so it...
But that doesn't necessarily mean it's buildable.
For an A and R, for an A and R plan, you would need access to that frontage. And so you've had a few in the last couple of years where they filed a definitive subdivision, and then everything got waved down to a driveway?
Well, that's different, though, is it? I mean, in the end, that may be the way that we could resolve this, huh, is just, because, I mean, ultimately, the point that they're connecting the driveway to an existing public way.
Yep.
So effectively, they can create access over public way, but it's just, it feels like there's another step that needs to be taken.
But it also go, gotta go across Leyden, which is a paper street, private play.
Yeah.
So there has to be some sort of ownership rights, or easement, or something that says you can do that. And if it's just that this is part of a subdivision, that everyone has the right to do that, then, then, then that's the answer, but I'm not, I'm not convinced necessarily, but, I mean, I guess...
Well, I mean, some of it too, is it looks like if, Gene, can you go back to what we had before? So, because, I mean, the, it's pretty clear that the driveway goes further down than the, the center line of the road. So it, technically, it seems to me that potentially runs into a problem with the person that owns the land on the other side, because it's access over land that arguably that person would own. But, I mean, in the overall scheme of things, if you can get the rights to access over that piece of land that's Leyden, it comes out on a, on a street, and, you know, and as long as we can cure that problem, I think it's fine.
So...
Well, I think, I think they do have access, and I, I don't have the deed with me, but, you know, when a property is conveyed, it's always conveyed with access over the roadways within subdivision. You know, we can verify that.
Which subdivision, I thought, say again?
Well, so there was a, there was a, the property, as I said, was on a plan in, in 1924.
Wouldn't this A and R trump that, though? If, if Leyden's now on this A and R plan?
Right, but, as you, the, the owner conveys properties, the owner owns the road, the owner, and he usually conveys the right to pass and repass over the roadways that are shown on whatever plan. You know, I did...
Well, let me ask you, do you, so do you think it needs a subdivision?
I don't think it needs a subdivision.
So you don't think it needs anything?
No, I think it, it's an A and R plan that accesses out onto a constructed roadway with a driveway.
So, I mean, it seems...
We don't have to extend, see, I, and I, I understand what you're saying, if you extend a right of way down, it's undeveloped, you're extending it to the property. This is here in front of the property, if you draw a straight line, um, you know, from the, the curve to our property, I mean, we have frontage on, on this portion of roadway. You know, where exactly does Leyden and Catuitt, where do they, they end, I'm not sure.
So, I mean, I...
It's not really demarcated, that here's Leyden, here's Catuitt.
So I guess, I mean, I'm not sure that I agree, but I guess, and, and, to be honest, I'm not really sure, it's, it's somewhat of a complex issue. But if you don't think that it needs that, and let's say we think that it does, I mean, your choices are file a subdivision, or not, and go forward, and if someone thinks that you're in the wrong, then they can take whatever remedies they have. But that you'd be, you'd continue on with, um, conservation, and it's your, or your client's risk that it may not be, you know, proper, and have to deal with that later on.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have to resolve it with the planning board, and it's, you know, I mean, if there's more research that we need, if we need to bring the deeds, show that we have access over those properties, um, I can get an attorney to give case law, you know, and that may be...
That's fine, that, that's fine, and that would, I mean, we're certainly happy to have that discussion, but even if we come to the same conclusion as you, that doesn't mean that it can't be, you know, or we come to a different conclusion, that doesn't mean that it can't be challenged by somebody else, you know?
Oh, that's always the case.
Right.
It's always the case.
But if you come for a subdivision, then we at least have something before us that we could act on, um, but that's...
And then somebody can challenge that.
Fair enough, fair enough, so...
Well, no matter which way we go, we can be challenged, that's, that's just the way this business works, so...
Okay, um, so yeah, I mean, I think some more research would definitely be helpful, um, as to the ownership and the, you know, specifically with the, the paper street, if you're crossing the paper street. And then, I mean, if there's anything about how this A and R came into existence, I'd be interested, but, and then what rights they have already to cross and repass, things like that, would be helpful, sure?
Okay.
Yeah, specifically across the 20-foot, or the, whatever the center line is of Leyden Street, specifically across that, where, where you're affecting other people's rights. And so I think a legal opinion that our town council can then review and weigh in on would be helpful. So I, I have the deed, but I don't know that it clearly answers what you're trying to do.
Right, I think you're gonna have to go back, because they stopped putting everything in the deeds.
Yep, so...
We'll go back to the original deeds and see, make sure they have the right to pass or repass, and, and we can get a legal opinion.
That'll be good.
Submit and have it reviewed by town council, so...
That would be fantastic, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, sorry, did anyone else have anything? I assumed not, okay. All right, thank you. Royal Crest Estates, 128 Royal Crest Drive, Trinity Financial, proposed master plan, redevelopment plans for the property. Gonna discuss the potential for design working group, we'll do traffic study update, uh, just briefly touch on draft mixed overlay district bylaw, program summary, and we do also have some butter comments, so we'll get those as well. I think one's about traffic, so we'll do that when we talk traffic, and after that we'll do the additional ones. Okay, um, so, number one, discussion, discuss potential for design working group. Anything to do, okay, so I guess, um, I'll just go on that. So one of the things that's been, um, discussed a, a lot at the, at our meetings is, um, a feeling that, um, this is, this proposal is in a location that's an entrance to North Andover, and some of the feel of it, um, is, doesn't feel the way North Andover, I feel not as suburban, uh, just not necessarily the right feel. So, one of the things that we could do, if people are interested, is, um, have a working group, uh, similar to the zoning working group that we've been having with, potentially a member of the board, we can talk about who might be part of it, but ways to actually work directly with the developer to discuss ways to soften or, um, make the appearance, I don't know, more preferable. And that can, that could take really any kind of, we're talking, architecture, landscaping, setbacks, heights, and other stuff. So I guess question one, is this something that people think would be worthwhile? And question two, is anybody particularly interested in doing it? So, it'd open up to, let's talk about one worthwhile, is it something that's worthwhile?
I, I guess, uh, my comment would be is, isn't that sort of what we've been doing for the last year? I mean, basically, looking at it and evaluating whether the density and look and feel and the way it lays is, is suitable for North Andover. I mean, uh, we've probably talked about it 20, 25 times, so I'm not sure, I, I, I guess my concern is by having a working group like this, that it's the same issue that came up the last meeting, where we're endorsing something that we haven't even seen the, uh, the, the final bylaw, we're standing behind it and supporting something that's clearly pretty controversial. I, I just don't think, it won't go anywhere anyway, because, you know, if we say, hey, to get what we want, you gotta decrease the density, I don't know if the developer's gonna do that or not, but we've already talked about that over and over again, that there's, we have real concerns about the density.
Yeah, I was thinking more like, and it may, and the answer may be no, and it may be that, that's your job to bring us something that we like, that may be, but more of, it's difficult in this, this setting to kind of get to some of those granular points of, well, maybe if we put a tree here versus a tree here, maybe if we change the windows to be, you know, a different way, or the roofs to be a different way, that, that, those are things that would make it, um, preferable. I don't think it changes the big picture, I'm not sure that it, I'm, I'm not suggesting this as a way to change people's minds necessarily, uh, at least on this board, about the project, but a way to address some of those concerns that have been more aesthetic or ethereal and hard to pin down, you know, right? Because we've said, and I think I've heard from people, I'm not sure I like the look of this, and so there are two ways to go about that. They can go, the developer can just change the look and say, hey, do you like this? Or change the look and say, hey, do you like this? Or we could actually, if people want to, work with them and say, hey, no, I don't like that, I don't like that, how about you try this, this, and this?
I think, from my perspective, I appreciate you sort of laying that out, it, it's not a case of fine tuning windows or color, it, you, you use the term, you know, it's not about, it's not gonna change the big picture, the big picture is what the problem is, that when you enter North Andover from that Andover bypass and make that corner, you've got, you know, we've talked about this many times, the thousand feet of four and five-story buildings, it's the big picture that's the concern, and so to have a work group to, I, I appreciate the suggestion, but to have a work group to work on sort of the, the fine details, it doesn't address the big picture, and that's the issue.
Okay, um, so, from your perspective, I get that. So the, the, I guess the question would be if someone, if, if there are people that are more on the fence, whether or not it would be helpful or not. Okay, uh, well, Kelly, Alyssa, what do you guys think? Helpful, not helpful, worth the time, not worth the time?
I, I, I have to agree with Peter on this one, I think we're kind of, again, fine tuning details when we still have a bigger picture that's, still needs to kind of be fleshed out and, and discussed, that there's bigger concerns than the finer detail, and although I think some, you know, maybe at one point that'll make a difference, I think right now it's too premature.
Okay, fair, Kelly?
I think Alyssa captured exactly how I'm feeling, I, I love the idea of the design working group to fine tune those things, we're not there, I think we've been very clear on the things that we don't like in terms of the appearance, on the big things, and that hasn't changed. So I think until we get past those big things, um, it's, the fine tuning, it's too early.
Okay, all right, so, so no on the working group. I would say, I'm not, given that there are five of us, and given that there are different concerns and different, um, levels of concerns about different things, not exactly sure that it's super clear, um, so, if there are things specifically that people have, that they want to continue to have addressed, just please keep bringing up those specific things, okay? Okay, so, uh, working group doesn't seem like that is something that, um, people think would be helpful, so we will say no to that. Okay, traffic study update.
Here tonight, um, at the last, I think, two meetings ago, the applicants, I'm sorry, the proponents submitted a letter in response to the previous peer review comments. Jeffrey Dirk has received that, and he's provided a memorandum, and he's here to speak to the board about that. In addition to this memorandum, he's answered questions the board posed at the last meeting, so we'll get to that, but he's, um, there were various, I think, four or five questions the board specifically asked me to reach out to Jeffrey on to weigh in. And then lastly, the proponents have submitted an answer to how this project would affect the average resident, and they provided some detail and numbers associated with that. So there, all those items are traffic related, and they suggest you go through those in order.
Okay, and then, there was one comment that we'll do, and we'll see if, if Jeff's comments answer those, or if not, we'll just go through that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
The proponents have that specific question asked by Don Scholman a couple meetings ago, that comment was carried, and they should answer specifically.
Okay, so we'll do that too, okay, great.
The table's fine, if you want, whatever you, whatever you...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, I'm the managing partner with Moneston Associates, and it's nice to be with you in person, although masked. So as Gene had mentioned, there were two items basically that we had taken a look at since the, the last time was before you. The applicant had submitted, um, some follow-up information, and this was in response to comments in our January 18th, uh, letter that we had. There were, basically, three items that were outstanding, they also included a summary and update with respect to the pedestrian, pedestrian bridge, um, and so we took a look at their responses, uh, to each of those items. Within that memorandum also was an update relating to some downsizing of specific elements of the project, so they had new trip generation calculations and some associated analyses to go along with that, so we did evaluate both of those as well. So the first item that they looked at was some specific recommendations or suggestions that we had to enhancing the elements of the transportation improvement program. As we had discussed earlier, as a part of our review, um, Mass DOT is undertaking a significant investment in some improvements to the Route 114 corridor. The applicant obviously is taking, uh, benefit for those improvements that are there, although the addition of the traffic from this project will use some of that available capacity that's being created as a part of the Mass dot project. So the focus of our suggestions on the enhancements, we're looking at ways and opportunities that the developer might be able to, um, go further and actually construct some additional improvements that would benefit. The improvements that Mass DOT is undertaking will actually complement those, with the goal of really achieving something where they would restore some level of capacity that would be equal to or close to what they're using at some of the intersections. Uh, so the first suggestion that we had was that they implement what's known as adaptive traffic control system technologies, and I think we talked about that at one of the earlier meetings, where that system, as it implies, is adaptive, so it reacts to changes in traffic volumes along the corridor, and the simplest way to think about that is what the system does, it's, it's measuring input and output through each of the intersections, and what it does is it understands that there's a certain capacity at, at an intersection, and it measures the volumes of traffic that is arriving, and then how much traffic it processes. If the volume of traffic that arrives is less than the volume of traffic that it processes, then it knows it didn't serve the demand, and so it adjusts its signal timing to try to serve the demand, and it keeps doing this on an iterative process until ideally the volume arriving is equal to the volume that is processed by the signal. So the adaptive system, uh, adjusts to traffic flow, so it's real time, um, and it's something that just adjusts on a continuous basis, so it's very beneficial, it's a newer type of technology. It's something that's very appropriate for this corridor, in fact, the locations in front of Merrimack College are kind of an ideal location to implement these. There are a series of signals that are in coordination, so the adaptive signal does that processing, and one signal to the next signal to the next signal, as the way coordination works, so the adaptive system is very effective at dealing with it. It also is effective in dealing with fluctuations in traffic flows. So as you have classes changing in Merrimack Colleges, you have summer sessions versus typical college sessions, the signal system without intervention is able to automatically adjust to that. It would also adjust to increases in traffic demands associated with this project, so it's very dynamic. So we had asked that specifically, that this system be installed at, um, the intersections along Route 114, basically between, uh, the Andover bypass, extending all the way down to the Peter Street, Hayville Street intersection. So that, Mass DOT has confirmed that in fact, that system will be installed at those locations.
Can I ask a question just generically about this technology? How long has it been in place? Can you give me an example of a place where it is, and how much of an improvement does it provide?
So I want to say it's been in use somewhere between, you know, five to 10 years, it's relatively new in this area, it's been used elsewhere in the country, um, and it's really in a... an effective way of dealing with roadways where you have very limited ability to widen the roadway, and you also have fluctuating traffic demands that it varies over the course of the year, and so, it's something that is very efficient, and it doesn't require a lot of human intervention, which is very costly, it's being installed at a lot of locations in Massachusetts, I think I can probably follow up with Jean on locations where it's actually in place, I know we have several systems under design, I'm sure the applicant's traffic engineer does as well, we are installing these on any corridor that has a heavy commercial type of development, so your shopping malls or open air malls that you have in place, those are the types of locations where we're doing this, also along roadway corridors that experience heavy traffic volume fluctuations, we're actually installing this system on Route 20 in the Charlton area, which seems very far removed, obviously, the issue for those that are familiar with that is, it runs parallel to the Mass Pike, so when the Mass Pike has traffic volumes or backups, particularly during the holiday period, traffic shifts over to Route 20, so all of those communities, including Charlton and Sturbridge, experience very large traffic demands during those periods, the signals are not timed for that, this dynamic system is one way to, at least in some of their downtown areas, to relieve that congestion, because it will adapt to it, so I can come up with some other locations for you, we're installing some in Newbury Port as well, with closely spaced signals that have the summer seasonal fluctuations, so it's going to become more and more prevalent on corridors where the signals are coordinated and very closely spaced. So that was the first item, the second item was the, we had suggested an installation of a right turn lane at the applicant's driveway, their primary driveway that would be opposite Walsh Way, and again, one of the reasons for that was to add some capacity to that intersection, we had subsequent discussions with Mass DOT about that, and one of the concerns, as you, as you know, Mass DOT's project on Route 114 is primarily, it's a complete streets project, so the focus of it is safety, but also pedestrian and bicycle enhancements, installing a right turn lane is, you kind of picture it, is basically bulging the curb line out, so pushing the curb towards the applicant's site, to create a pocket so that right turning vehicles can get into the project site and actually not have to be processed by the signal, the issue with that, of course, is that we add a lane to Route 114, so, you know, putting the pedestrian bridge discussion aside, what that does is it increases the distance a pedestrian has to cross Route 114 by an additional lane, so an additional 12 feet, so that's an additional 12 feet that a pedestrian is exposed to vehicular traffic, it's also very awkward from the standpoint of, a bicyclist, let's say, riding down Route 114, all of a sudden they've got a right turn lane on one side as they're driving, so it, it creates some things that, dynamic, that really, from a complete streets standpoint, is not something that's very beneficial, the other thing from a practical approach is, we did spend some time looking at those vehicle queuing diagrams at each of the intersections, because levels of service aside, we had talked about the queuing at the intersections really is something that's a very dynamic situation, that's not necessarily expressed by the levels of service, so if you remember looking at those queue diagrams, and looking at the extent of the queuing at some of the intersections, if you looked at this intersection in particular, that queue extends back several hundred feet, in fact, getting close to the Andover bypass at that point, the issue with it is, as that queue gets longer, that right turn lane to have any benefit has to be at least equal to that queue length, because you wouldn't be able to get into it if you're stuck at the back of that queue, and so really the benefit that would be attained by providing that right turn lane, isn't there, because it would have to be so long, it would serve no practical purpose, to be able to have someone actually be able to get in that line, so this is a long way of getting to the right turn lane really, although it might provide some advantages, the disadvantages that go along with that kind of outweigh any marginal advantage that you would gain from adding that, so both, you know, our discussions with Mass DOT, the applicant's discussions as well, indicated that that would provide very little benefit. The next comment that we have with respect to the enhancements was just, again, back to that queuing, we had suggested that, at a couple of intersections, the Route 125 Andover Street, and the Waverly Road approaches to Route 114, we had suggested that some ability to be able to lengthen those turn lanes would be advantageous, because as we looked at that queue again, if you remember, the left turn queue spilled out of the left turn pocket, and into the through travel lane, so what that did is it actually increases the queue lengths, but it also increases delays, because the left turn lane is, the storage that's provided is not adequate, the applicant of Mass DOT, I think they may continue to look at that, but their initial pass at it was that they provide as much storage as they can, there's not available right of way to extend those turn lanes, so again, the right turn lane at the driveway, it's not something that's functional, it would be feasible to put in for a number of reasons, the opportunity to extend the turn lanes at those two intersections as well was something that was deemed not feasible, because there isn't public right of way, so if you look at each of those things that we have suggested, really, the only thing that really could be done was the adaptive signal system, so that's going to circle us back to some of the other comments that we have, because now really what we're talking about is, there's limited availability or ability to create some additional capacity on the corridor, so the way to, to address the impacts of the project, aside from the adaptive signal system or adaptive control technologies, is really going to be focused on trip reduction, so the trip reduction is something that's really going to be achieved through a very aggressive transportation and management program, and that gets to our other two comments and suggestions, so the first is really, the site needs to be served by public transportation, in order to have, you know, any benefit of reducing traffic volumes at the density that they're looking at here, we have to provide that connectivity and alternative modes of transportation, so that's going to be done through some of the conversations that they're currently having with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, who have said they would be interested in serving this site, we've commented that we also think, you know, that's obviously a great idea and needs to be done, to supplement that, and essentially backstop it is potentially, looking at a private shuttle service that the applicant runs either as a part of their development, but also certainly with Merrimack College, and maybe with some of the other businesses' residential properties along the corridor, because if we can't build capacity, the way we can provide some capacity is reducing the traffic volumes, and one of the ways to reduce the traffic volumes, is to make sure that we have a very effective transportation and management program that includes transit service and connections to MBTA commuter rail station, and other services, maybe the, the express bus into Boston, those kind of things that are currently operated by the Regional Transit Authority, but also supplemented by a shuttle service, and that is all, as I said, backstop through a series of measures through this transportation demand management program, which we've suggested the applicant should provide some level of outline to the town, so at least we can see what the framework of that might look like, and that framework does need to include their thought process on removing barriers for anyone that, that lives there or works there to use public transportation, removing the barriers are basically making sure that there's no financial barriers, so some level of ability, either through a subsidy or otherwise, so that residents and employees there, to the extent that we can reduce their out-of-pocket costs or make it negligible, that's going to be a benefit for them to using those services, designing a site, you were talking about kind of design parameters relating to the development itself, looking to make sure that we have robust pedestrian and bicycle accommodations and connections is very important, and that they're also safe within the site, so we think the applicant should start to flush out some of those opportunities, just so that we can see what the framework is, we provided some, some comments to the applicant, and suggested what those may look like, and so, we've suggested that they flush those out a little bit more, the way they've established it right now is said, you know, we have a very long process, we have to file through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, and at that time we'll frame, framework that out, but we think that's something that will be helpful for you to see, but also for the community to understand what their commitments are for that trip reduction strategy.
Can you talk about that, the track record of trip reduction strategies, I have to believe that unless some places within walking distance of subway, commuter rail, that stuff rarely does work, I mean, I think, I just, I used to take the train into Boston every day, and I would see the MVRTA buses, not a person is on them.
Right.
I, I know the number, they have tried for years to get a bus into Boston, hugely problematic getting people to consistently do it, I, it sounds nice, I don't think it works.
You know, it really depends on, again, if it's, if it's heavily subsidized or free, which most of them are already, but if you still have to pay, you know, nine, 10 dollars, or whatever it happens to be, for a trip into Boston, you know, you're going to think twice about it, if it, if it's something that it's, it's, the service is frequent, it's convenient, and it doesn't cost you much to do that, you start to induce people to use it more so than a service that's expensive for people to use, if it's not convenient, and it costs you money to do it, you're more than likely just going to say, I'll use my car, whatever, so, it's really got to be a coupling thing of making sure that it's convenient, but also removing those financial barriers, and so I think that's something where the, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority can't operate a free, free bus service for this site, so that's where backstopping it potentially with the...
The free bus services only work on the other side, I mean, you know, it's, that you get to North Station, and a bus comes and picks you up to take you to your office, it doesn't work on the other side, because it's, the problem is, there's not the density of people coming in, I mean, I just don't believe that there's any likelihood that you can mitigate traffic very much, I think the track record is extremely poor.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, you know, it's got to be marketed, it has to be effective, so that's kind of what we want to see is, you know, what are the applicant's commitment to do that, I mean, to, to suggest, we, it's not unreasonable to suggest you could achieve somewhere upwards of about a 10% reduction in the traffic volumes, and we've cited that in our letter, but that has to be something in the suburbs, and it's got to be something that's coupled with a very effective transportation and management program, and we, we need to see that flushed out by the applicant, so we can try to put some numbers to that, as to how effective that may be, if there are, if they are willing to operate a shuttle service privately, where that shuttle service might go, because that, those are the kind of things that would make the program effective, so we need to see what that really looks like, just saying, the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority is going to serve the site is not going to get a 10% reduction, you know, we've got to see more of that plan to see, is that really going to be credible, to your point?
Yeah, first, I appreciate the additional analysis and giving us some feedback on the questions, you know, my sort of summary, my take on this is, the applicants encouraged the view that there were several additional mitigations, right turn, more storage on turn lanes, we've got a good analysis that says, not feasible. Bringing us to what I have to describe, I'm sorry, as the astonishing point, that the real solution here is to reduce the traffic, well, that's the concern!
Yeah, exactly, well, that's, that's what it is, so it's really...
But, I mean, we have really come full circle now, so, our concerns early on about, geez, these are big numbers, yeah, they are.
Right.
Now, the notion of encouraging public transportation, I mean, I, I'm all for it, I, not right now, but I have done that in the past for years, I've got a lot of experience on where it works and where it doesn't, and when there's multiple connections, it's really painful.
Correct.
Which brings me back to our overwhelming concern about this proposal, and that is size, scope, and density, which translates into this additional traffic, which we now understand, well, we got to reduce that, if this type of size, scope, and density were in or near an urban area, there's a solution, relatively close access to public transportation that actually works, when we say this doesn't fit North Andover, we're not saying that we don't support additional housing, we've got, if anything, a heck of a strong track record of additional housing on this board, and some would say way too much already, so that's not the issue, the reason it doesn't fit North Andover is, all of the feedback we're getting is, yep, too big, too much scope, too much density, too much traffic, we cannot handle it, and unless we move North Andover next to an urban area, there isn't a solution.
So can we, well, so I want one comment, then I would like to go to...
Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's good, I'd like to go to the numbers, because I think, I think we talked about the numbers, because I think that's important, so, I agree, I don't think saying reduce traffic is going to be some sort of panacea, I will say that private transportation has a chance to make a difference, I agree, I don't think it's a tremendous difference, but that's something that I, I think the key is, it has to be so much more, so much cheaper, and so much more effective, and the alternative has to be really bad, right?
Correct.
The alternative of driving to, let's say, Boston, and finding parking and paying for parking, has to be so bad that you're willing to not do things on your timetable and, and, and do it some other way, so, that's hard to find, could you make some difference with a private transportation, I think so, I mean, when I lived outside Washington DC, that's what, the apartment complex I had had, it was a, two, a private bus that came every 20 minutes, took you to the train station, it was, you know, six, or six to nine in the morning, something like that, and same thing from the train station at night, now, if you weren't going those hours, if you were not going downtown, it's not particularly helpful, so, I guess I'm also somewhat curious as to, you know, of the people that would be living here, how many do we actually think are going to be making a commute to Boston, I, I don't know the answer to that, that might be helpful information, or how many do it now, so it can have some effect, but I agree that I don't think it's a large effect, it's not something that we should hang our hat on, so, so I agree with these gentlemen on that, and I think then the question comes to, what is with, what is the traffic, as, like, tell us about their data, and what you looked at with the, with the current plan, and then I had a question about, one thing that I had asked previously, that I didn't really have a satisfactory answer to, is if the project gets proposed and, and gets permitted, and then things happen and the traffic is more than you expected, what can be done after the fact for mitigation, and specifically, in general, and then potentially specific to this project?
Right, so first, you know, starting with the, the traffic numbers, so I think we've always, you know, started from the premise of a project that's going to generate about, you know, over 9,000 vehicle trips per day, net, over what's there today, so that's a big increase, and I think we've always said, yes, and, and the peak hour numbers...
Could I just put it in context, for listeners, I think we covered at the last meeting, or the one before, that that 9,000 is a tripling, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Can we just, just, just so we... I know we've had some, some difficulty with our percentages, I think, we actually see what the, what, could just talk about what the actual numbers are, what is today and what it would be?
Yeah, let me...
Just so we can make sure that we're accurate on that.
So this is from their October 20th letter, so the, the existing site is 588 residential units, and the 588 residential units on, using it compared to the 9,354 number, is today generating, or estimated to generate 4,488 vehicle trips, so if you just said it's going from 4,500 to 9,400?
9,100, 9,400 more, right, so it's going from 4,500 to 13,500.
Correct, that's the net, correct.
So that, that's why, that's why...
That's, that's why it's tripling, not doubling.
Exactly, and that's why I just want to be clear with the numbers.
The 9,400 is the net new over the 40, so you're right, it's, it's 13, or whatever the difference is.
So from 4,500 to 13,500, okay, all right, and tell us what that does to our, well, one, do you agree with their, their traffic data?
I do, I do, yes, I've checked the numbers, and I do agree with those.
Okay, and one of the questions we had was about peak being about 10% or 9% or something like that?
Yeah, generally, your, your peak numbers, given the mix of uses that are there, with this being now more heavily weighted to residential, your peak numbers are going to, for the residential is going to be somewhere between 7 and 10% of that daily number, and that's pretty typical, what you'd find, that's the amount produced during the peak hour.
I have a question, are you seeing any change with the peak hour, given your kind of mid-COVID, post-COVID driving patterns? given your kind of mid, mid COVID, post-COVID driving patterns? Is that starting to shift where people aren't driving into work at eight, nine, you know, seven to eight in the morning anymore, but maybe taking several trips during the day? So the peak is moving?
No, it's actually shifted back, although the order of magnitude of the, of the volumes is not back to pre-COVID. But the peaks are getting back to where they were pre-COVID.
Okay, so there's actual data that we could be, so we could be using current data, not year-old data as we're looking at traffic numbers? What should we be using?
Well, we could be, but however, it depends on where you are in the town. I think one of, that's one of the questions that was posed by the board at the last meeting. And I think for the Route 114 corridor, the volumes aren't quite back to where they were pre-COVID. So the data the applicant used, if, if they went out and did their traffic counts today and use that data, the numbers would be lower than the numbers they used in their study. Because the volumes have not gotten back to pre-COVID levels.
Okay. And is that, okay, so there's actual counts on that?
Yeah, now steel is true.
Not the assumptions. We were all kind of working on assumptions before. It's now counts and there's data behind that.
Yes, actually. There's 2021 data already for the Route 114 corridor. So we can take that data and we have and looked back at the, at the historic data at the same location. And what was, I think the historic data pre-COVID was just over 30,000 vehicles per day. The 2021 traffic volumes are, are below that. They're just around 29 with some change there. So it hasn't quite gotten back there. It's getting closer. But again, it kind of, I guess from the standpoint of this project, that's, that's applicable because it's on the Route 114 corridor. I wouldn't necessarily apply that elsewhere in the town. Any place where you have heavily office-centric development along the corridor, the volumes are nowhere near what they were pre-COVID. So the reductions are quite substantial in terms of if you measured traffic volumes now versus 2019 or 20, yeah, 2019.
Thank you.
And so, yeah, if you could talk about what the numbers with this current proposal kind of mean? And then I think Kelly's question about how it affects the average North Andover citizen somewhere else in town or in downtown, that would be helpful, since that was a good question by her.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the new peak hour numbers that we're talking about are somewhere, the weekday morning is 631 vehicles will be generated by the project. Evening is 737, and the Saturday is 897. So those are the, that's the total volume. The net increase over what's out there today with the 588 residential units ranges from 512 vehicles in the morning peak hour up to a net increase of 717 during the Saturday midday peak hours. That's the, the change in volume that you would experience over what's out there today, essentially assuming the 588 units are there. That's additional traffic added onto the roadway.
And how does that affect the intersections and queuing and things like that? Like, where does it take us from where we are today, which sometimes is low, sometimes is really high?
Correct.
What, what does that do for us?
So it does result in impacts at the intersections. And I think the most pronounced impact that you'd see would be the length of the queues at the intersections. I mean, arguably, the net increase is marginal. However, the issue is really what you had mentioned, which is that those queues are already long. And so even though you might see a marginal increase, what it means is the queues that are out there that are perceived as being long get longer, even with the mass DOT roadway improvements. And so that's where we've suggested, again, we were trying to look at some enhancements. Absent being able to do those enhancements, where you arrive at a conclusion is to say, okay, then the choice is to create something where you reduce the traffic volumes. And I think that's what you're asking the questions about. You know, as we look at it, if the development program is fixed, then the only way we can do is get people out of their cars and put them in alternative modes. The other option is the applicant to go back and take a look at the mix of uses within the site. Because I think that's important as well. And I don't want to lose sight of that, because as they're looking at changes to the program, I think what you necessarily do not want to have is a switch to all residential. Because some of the changes they've made to the program, although they're marginal in terms of the differences, as they start reducing the amount of retail space that complements the residential space that's there, this idea of those internal trips, which they've taken credit for, assuming that there will be an interaction between the uses, that drops. And so any benefit you have of having complementary type of commercial use within the site is that goes down, that ability for that interaction also goes down. And then you have a site that's more, as you were talking about commuter-related, which generates more traffic. And so it-
If you take away a supermarket or a grocery store, then instead of staying within the community and getting it, you're going out and now it's an additional two trips, such as something to be-
Exactly. Yeah, so then you're kind of offsetting or fighting against the concept of trip reduction. So I think that, you know, as they look at changes in the development program, heading towards a more residential-oriented project kind of defeats that purpose of those internal trips. So we just need to be careful about that as well. You know, the, the questions you were mentioning in terms of talk, there was a couple of things, and they were very good questions posed by the planning board in the community as well, I think, in looking at, you know, how do we measure some of these aspects as it relates to what would be experienced by the average resident as they travel on, travel along the corridor, but also trying to come up with a way to express, you know, the, the, the capacity that's being used by the project above and beyond, I think, what mass DOT. So mass DOT is making an investment in the corridor and making some improvements. So if this project didn't, doesn't go, didn't go forward, there'd be available capacity that's there. So obviously, any project that comes in the corridor uses some of that capacity. The applicant, there is a way for the applicant to look at what capacity is created and then how much of the capacity that they're using. And so that's, it's a measure of what's known as volume to capacity. So just as it's defined, it's measuring the volume of traffic that's, an intersection has a fixed capacity. And then you have a volume of traffic that's going through the intersection. So that creates your volume-to-capacity ratio with each of the intersections. So the, one of the ways to look at it is to say, what's the volume-to-capacity before the project is there? What's the volume-to-capacity after? And the difference between those two is the capacity that's used by the project. So rather than us looking at levels of service and queues at the intersections, it's one way that the applicant can present to you. After mass DOT is done, this intersection has this capacity or this volume-to-capacity ratio. When we're done, here's what the volume-capacity ratio would be with the project in place and any improvements they're going to do. And then that will tell you what percent capacity is used. And they can grade that at each of the intersections. So I think that's one way that might be helpful so that you could understand impacts that are created at each of these intersections in terms of how much capacity is this project using at each of the locations.
One of those lines, we know how much extra capacity or throughput the project is going to provide exclusive of this project.
So no build scenario?
Yeah, just assume for a second it stays what it is, but the traffic plan gets done. What incremental capacity does that provide?
So the applicant can correct me, however, what my understanding is, is that we've suggested some enhancements, it's been deemed not to be feasible. Therefore, they are, if mass DOT is installing the adaptive system, they're not necessarily doing anything to add capacity to the roadway. They're using the available capacity that's created by mass DOT's project. Because there's no additional lanes being added. They're adding driveways, which may, you know, may improve some efficiency. But they're not adding any capacities to the roadway. So if the question is, well, what capacity are they adding above and beyond the mass DOT project? The answer is not, I'm not aware of anything.
What does, I guess, what incremental capacity does the mass DOT project provide?
Well, that's one of the things we've asked them to look at. As they provided their analysis, the one piece of information that's not contained in their analysis is the overall volume-to-capacity ratio at each of the intersections. They've given it to us for each individual movement. But really, a good way to look at it is, okay, what is the capacity total of the intersection as it operates? That piece of information is not a part of their analysis, although they can provide it. And so we've just suggested they should provide that. Because if they're not able to do these incremental enhancements, we suggested there's no capacity created, there's capacity used, but no capacity added back, which gets us back to, okay, then we need to look at a situation where what can you do as a part of the development project to reduce your traffic volume so that the amount of capacity you're using is less?
I guess my question is a little bit along the lines is hypothetically speaking, what if this got built in five years from now? For example, where the movie theaters are in Lawrence, that's not being used today. There's a 1,500 unit apartment building, or even where the market basket is, it converts to housing. Would that croak the, that additional capacity? And then that layered in with this project?
Yeah, I mean, that's what you have to consider is because as you have more and more projects coming along the line that come before this board, that every project that comes in that does not offer mitigation to offset their impact or add additional capacity is just using the available capacity. So they're each taking a bite at the capacity that's there.
So let's, let's, I'd like to have the applicant do that. So what we're talking about is providing a, we want a no-build scenario, right? Nothing gets built.
Right.
And so this project doesn't go forward, nothing gets built, nothing changes. Mass DOT project goes ahead. Well, let's do it. Not, mass DOT project doesn't go ahead, right? For some reason, not in our control. Mass DOT project, as proposed, goes ahead. What's the capacity? Then with the build, what's the capacity? And then we can make a, we can use math then.
Yes.
Okay. The only fourth thing I have is similar to what John said, but it's, is there a way to calculate, okay, let's say this project doesn't go forward, but some other project goes forward on the same, in the same place, or down the street? Can we calculate a hypothetical halfway project? Something that has half the amount of, of, of traffic? And what would that do to the capacity? And is that worthwhile? Is a hypothetical, is a hypothetical worthwhile? I'm asking you and I'm asking members of the board what they think about that. I, I, not my area, I don't know. Because it, because it seems like the no-build versus the proposal are probably the two least likely scenarios, right? There's probably some third scenario out there that's actually more likely to happen. But what exactly that is, we don't know. So I guess is that worthwhile to have a fourth column of a hypothetical halfway point?
You, you could, however, I think it's really dependent. I mean, you'd really have to say where, where that proposal is going to take place.
Right.
Because it is specific. The, the impacts are specific to where it's located.
And what it is, right?
And what it is.
Okay, so would this be helpful? I mean, let's say, let's say we had a 40B project on Royal Crest that was half the size of what's being proposed now. And that's something that's potentially feasible. You know what? Let's leave it out for now. I guess it's not, it's, it's too hypothetical, too. Unless anybody wants it, let's leave it out for now. Let's just-
I think it's a good idea to raise. I think it's too hypothetical at this point.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be as useful. But I just want to point it out that that's, that there, when we're looking at the data, that there are those kind of unknowns out there that could be a, that could, could happen, so.
This, this first level of analysis that we've suggested and that you're suggesting, you know, more than likely would lead to maybe your, your question. Because when you get the results of that, your question may be then, as you look at it, is to say, okay, depending on what the percent utilization is of capacity, you may say, well, let's do a run just to see what X percent utilization capacity would be. And that's just a pure volume number.
You're right. Okay.
And then once you have that volume number, that can translate into some level of development, you know? So, so I think this first-
So you could say, you could say, okay, if we really wanted to stay at 70% volume to capacity-
Overall, correct.
Overall, what kind of development would support that?
Yeah, because you'd know what the volume of traffic would be that would be associated with it. So if that volume of traffic, let's say, was, you know, 400 vehicle trips during the peak hour, just given its dispersal, that could get translated into a certain number of residential units and a certain amount of commercial space. You know, those type of scenarios can be run once you get to that point. So I think the first, the first run would allow you to do that.
Okay.
That could give us some of useful objective measures.
Yeah.
And you know, when we talk about consuming roadway volume capacity, it strikes me how analogous this is to something the board has raised many times, this project and others. How much water do we have in the lake that's available for drinking water? And each new development is consuming how much of that capacity? This is a very similar question, only for roadway capacity. And I don't think we really had a good articulation of that until tonight, so thank you. It's very helpful.
You know, that's, again, you know, we all like to talk about levels of service and things like that, but really, that's an easy way to explain operating conditions on an intersection. But really, it's how much capacity are you using? And that, that ultimately gets translated into those letter grades, although not fully. So even though you may see something where it's a good level of service, it could be something where, yeah, but the volume-to-capacity ratio is getting pretty close to the capacity, even though the, the level of service, which takes into account, you know, many factors, is still good. The approach could be operating close to its design capacity. So it's, it's a, it's something that's an, it's a, it's a better measure to look at in terms of the overall intersection and easier to understand from a concept perspective.
Is it, is it also something that can be done? Again, this might be more difficult than it's worth, I guess, over time, right? Because you're not going to build out a project right away. It's going to take time. So your first two years versus four years versus six years versus eight years, you're going to have different numbers of people coming in and out. I don't know if we can correlate that with the proposed mass DOT, but I'm not sure if that's worthwhile.
Well, we've raised this question before and it's never been answered. I appreciate you raising it again. It's sort of two lines on a graph. How quickly would this proposal or any other one add volume at the same time that mass DOT is doing a multi-year project? How quickly does the mass DOT project add capacity? We could have a year or two where we're way upside down.
Yeah, and I think we've gotten good information, I think from the applicant, about their phasing project and their numbers. I don't know that we have anything from mass DOT and we-
It's not just having it from each party, it's then putting it together so we can see where, if anywhere, does it really go badly negative, or maybe not?
And if, and if there is a period, and I'll get to that, and if there is a period, and let's say it's a year, just a year, where it's, is there something that can be done for that year to mitigate that? Rather than say, okay, it's bad for a year, project's off, which you could do. But I'm just saying, are there ways, if there are specific time periods that we find? If we find that it's the whole time, then that's not really a relevant question. So Kelly?
So Peter, I was, Peter, thanks for kind of suggesting it that way. I think that's a, a great idea. One thing I would suggest, even one more piece to lay over that is, you know, not just what, what are the percentage of capacity that it would take up over time with the progression? But what, what does that mean to, and I'll, I'll keep going back to this. I don't know how we define it, but the average North Andover commuter, person driving around, is it adding five seconds to their commute, five minutes or 20 minutes, or taking off 15? I think, let's get down to what it really means to people, waiting in their cars and trying to get to point A and point B.
So let's go to that next. But let's keep that as, Gina, something that we can try to follow up, see what kind of, if any, timetables we can get from mass DOT, even as a mock schedule of, you know, what's going in first? Are we doing the roadway improvements and then are we doing the adaptive signalization at the end? Is it going the other way around? Are we doing the, the traffic signals first with the adaptive and then widening for the bike lanes and stuff like that? Just anything we can get would be helpful, even if we have to take it with a grain of salt and say that this is projected and things could change. It at least gives us something more than we have now. And then, so, yeah, why don't you talk about the, I know you'd had some kind of comments or analysis about the average-
Yeah.
Impact.
Sometimes one of the easiest ways, as was kind of suggested, is to, to explain to, you know, the, the average roadway user is, if it takes me five minutes to get from point A to point B today, what's it going to be in the future with the project? A way to do that is, you know, all of this, we talked about, you know, the, the applicant's built this traffic model. And the traffic model, basically what it's doing is it's simulating traffic going through these intersections, and it runs lots of simulations, and then it reports the results or the averaging of those simulations. They can provide an output of travel times. So if they say, what's the, they can, the model can provide to you a travel time between the Andover bypass and Andover Street, let's say. So you could select the section of corridor and have the model tell you, how long does it take today to get from point A to point B that's assumed in the model, in, in either direction? How long would it take with a mass DOT improvement project in place and without this project? So the no-build condition. And then what is it with the mass DOT project and this project? And then you'd be able to see the travel time in each direction on the roadway for each of those two. each of those time periods and be able, that's an easy way to explain, just using the model, today it takes you this long, without the project it's gonna take you this long, and then with the project, it's going to be this long. So that gives you two ways to look at it. You're looking at capacity utilization through the volume to capacity ratio, so you know how much capacity is being used. And now you also have a travel time model that tells you, here's what your travel time is between any two points on the roadway, by direction and by time of day.
Okay, so that, that definitely makes sense, but trying to look at it, is there a way to look at it broader, I think, which was kinda Kelly's question? Let's say I live on Sutton Street, and my normal commute is, I get on four ninety-five and then I go to north or I go south. Is there a way to measure if that person is affected? If the person lives on hillside, you know, and now is kinda at the border of kinda the traffic study? If they live out by, you know, Johnson Street or out, you know, further? Is there a way to say, they may be affected, they won't be affected? Is there a way to measure where they're going right now? I mean, kind of ethereal questions that we don't know. Are there measurements for, proxy measurements for, right?
Can I add something to that?
Yeah.
Just by way of example, it seems like a lot of these traffic measures are, sort of the orientation of our head and our analysis is movement along the corridor.
Right.
Boarding this proposal, and we need that. But what about movement orthogonal to the corridor? So let's say somebody lives on, near Mass Ave, near four ninety-five, and they need to cross one twenty-five, cause they're gonna head out to Boxford or Newbury, or something. They're, they're crossing this corridor. With the additional capacity, trying to move through this corridor, how, how will that affect their traffic? They're not even going by Roy, Royal Crest, but I think that's part of what Kelly's getting to. So could we think not only movement in the corridor, but movement trying to cross it at various points?
Yeah. Well, let me add one other level of complexity that wouldn't make it too complex, but I think there's another factor that people existing on the roadway realize there's going to be increased stoppages, so people are coming towards Lawrence on one fourteen, they decide to go on Charkis Pond Road down Salem Street because they wanna get over to four ninety-five, and then the old center chokes up even worse than it is today. I mean, how do you get at all those secondary effects?
So I think started, we start with kinda the first, the crossing concept. So their analysis does say that if you're trying to cross Route one fourteen, they do have delays before and after the project. So the, the change in the delay would tell you how much longer it's going to take for you to get across Route one fourteen. So that information's available. I think that what would be helpful is maybe if we just identified specific points in the town where you'd like that analysis performed, and then the applicant can look at it. If I'm going from here to, you know, point A to point B, crossing Route one fourteen, here's what the increase in delay is for, say, the through movement that's trying to go across Route one fourteen.
I think it has to be more than one fourteen. It has to be the connectors crossing one twenty-five and other locations, and what's the impact on the old center from people deciding to take different routes?
And I would, kinda where this came from is, is trying to figure out what, what is the average north end over commute like, the residents? Right? Where do we go in the morning, or the evening, or the, during the day? And it, that data has to be available somewhere, there, there's lots of data out there. How are people, you know, whether it's a combination of some type of census data, traffic data, you know? We take a survey, what do people go? Do they go, the school go into the school complex, drop kids off, get stuck in that, and then move across, or go to Boston, go to Boxford, go to Newburyport, wherever they go? Find out where the majority of people are going, and understanding with all of the different traffic changes that are happening throughout the town, what does this mean to our residents? And I do, I, I understand it goes beyond the scope of strictly this project, but I think we have to look at the larger picture, given the traffic changes and the concerns that everyone is having, is what I'm trying to get to.
I mean, and I think your point is really well made, Kelly, and I, and I think, I mean, I actually think it probably, that question probably actually helps the applicant, because I think there are a significant amount of people that this wouldn't affect, but we don't know that, right? We don't, we don't know. So I guess the question is, what can we easily study with the data that we have? That's question one. And then what's a good, what's a way to try to get more information?
And I would just suggest to each other, can we get more, if we don't have the data, what can we do to get it? Right? There's gotta be some way, you know, I, I don't know whose responsibility is, or how is, how it happens, but I would think for us to be able to get comfortable with any impact and change, we've gotta figure out how to get it.
So let's, let's try to do this in parts. Let's start with Jeff's idea of marking some intersections and studying those particular intersections. They can be crossing, they can be going off, why don't we do that? So maybe Kelly and Peter, is that something you guys could work on and maybe present to the board, and then we could ask them to do it? It is just some, I think someone needs to come up with that. I don't know who the best person is, but I think it's, I think it's better for us to do it, because I think we have a better sense of which, um, intersections would be impacted, rather than the developer presenting them to us. But I'm open to, I mean, whatever people, I just, whatever the best idea, the way to get about it is.
I don't wanna hold up this because of my bandwidth as, as a volunteer.
Yeah.
So that's part of my concern.
Yeah, that, that, no.
Yeah.
Kelly, is, I mean, you just say, at least coming up with some and presenting, you, I mean, I just, someone to just come up with some presumptions on the board, and we can say yes or no, or add a couple, where we can all think about it and come back and, and, you know, mix and match which ones we have.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't think I've got the expertise for it. I think this is something that, there should be someone for a, a traffic expert that could come and look at what the town is doing and moving. I would think there's gotta be some consulting engagement, someone can bring you in to have this done. I think it, now is the time, given what, you know, the, the impacts and changes that we have in town, to do it. I'm, I'm glad to work with that person, I have actually.
Companies that have access to mobile data.
Yeah, Waze, Waze sells their data, right? You can see where people going, point A, point B, that, that data is available. It, 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 just, there's, and there's gotta be people looking to figure it out.
Okay, so let's do this. Gene, do you have any ideas or could talk to people in the field? Jeff, applicant, your traffic person, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, I know you've been here a bunch of times, but if you could come up with some suggestions, give them to Gene, and then we can talk about them at the next meeting. Uh, if any members of the public have ideas or intersections they want us to look at, send them in and we can talk about them. Uh, I think it's hard to quantify, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't at least give it a shot. So let's start with that, and then.
I do like the idea of a consultant who does that kind of analysis.
Yeah.
And there are corridor traffic study, larger corridor traffic studies that are done, um, I believe that the town manager mentioned seeing, you know, knowing that ones that were done in other towns, so she might have some experience on who to reach out to.
Well, I feel like my admission, they have, I mean, they're the closest thing I know that does any of that sort of stuff today. I just don't know how extensive they do it on a town by town basis.
But I mean, I, I mean, if it's also just taking traffic counts, gotta have an intern that can do that too, um, at least to gather data, right? Uh, the, I mean.
Oh, but the mobile phone data.
Yeah.
You don't need to be taking counts. You can see how cars are moving, and there are companies who do that. I mean, it's metadata, there's no identification to it, but the, the issue here is finding a vendor who handles that kind of data.
Okay, let's, let's see what we can find.
I, I think Kelly's spot on, that the data's out there, we need to figure out how to get it, and, and frankly, what's going on in the back of my mind is a lot of people have given this board feedback that we've had a succession of developments. Has anybody looked at the cumulative impact? We are looking at the cumulative impact on drinking water. This would be a way to try to get our arms around cumulative impacts on traffic. But it's gotta be the right consultant that has access to that type of data to really be meaningful.
I mean, I think census data would help too, in terms of where people work and things like that, to an extent, you know? But I don't know if the census data's out yet. It might be, I think it is. Something we can try to look at. Okay, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a note to try to look at that, and see at least what we can find. Okay. Jeff, was there anything else that we asked, or things based on tonight's discussion? Oh, the pedestrian bridge, right? Did we, did?
Yeah, so the, the pedestrian bridge still, you know, it, I think from the applicant's perspective, they've, they've looked at it, and they've determined at least at this point, it's, it doesn't seem to fit in with their development program, but also that, um, the at-grade crossing is functioning safely today, um, and therefore, they don't see that there's gonna be a significant increase in terms of pedestrian crossings, and so I think from Mast DOT's perspective, as well as the applicant's perspective, the pedestrian bridge at this time is not, not something that's being pursued, however, they've suggested that, that they would revisit it as a part of their traffic monitoring program, and that, to the extent that it was, you know, there were needs for pedestrian enhancements for the crossing, that they would then undertake it if, if the monitoring program suggested there was a need to do that. So that's kinda the way it's been left, um, at this point. Mast DOT really hasn't weighed in one way or the other on it, um, they haven't said yes or no to it. They have come back and basically said that, uh, from the standpoint of the bridge, they're not building it as a part of their project, so any bridge that's going to be there would need to be built by this applicant.
So let me just drill down a little bit. You're saying the applicant has said, you know, could possibly be part of the follow-on traffic monitoring, and then if there's a need, they could look into it. Does that mean that the board should require a bond by the applicant sufficient for that project? Cause otherwise, it's, it's, there's nothing behind it.
So the, the, the issue of a traffic mo, a robust traffic monitoring program really is something that would need to be a part of this project. I mean, you, you'd really need to have that. And the key thing to that is defining within the monitoring program the metrics they're required to measure, the goals that they're supposed to achieve, and then if they don't achieve whatever those goals are, or achieve certain metrics, then, then there's a series of things that they've got to do associated with that. So I think, you know, the issue of a bond is something that can be discussed, or you just, for lack of a, say in the monitoring program that you define the criteria that they're going to assess with the pedestrian thing, and then you say right within that, that, you know, if these metrics are not met, then here's what you need to do. And one of those things could be up to and including the construction of the bridge, and just leave it at that. Because then it's tied to something they're going to measure, and then mitigation is defined for the applicant so that they can monetize it.
So let me, um, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna read part of Mr. Schallman's email that touches someone on this on November first, twenty twenty-one, and then ask the applicant to just comment on this. So part of this says, "I believe that the traffic impacts will be greater than currently projected. I believe the increase in usage of the crosswalk will not be limited to the one thousand college residents and the student housing. Royal Crest is now not, not now a destination or an attraction for the Merrimack College community at large. Accordingly, I suspect the current use of the crosswalk is limited to the approximately eight hundred students living at Royal Crest and occasional visitors. The new development includes businesses, shops, stores, and restaurants that will be destinations for the entire Merrimack College community, which in two thousand twenty exceeds five thousand four hundred students. I'd like to know how or if the revised traffic study models the possibility of significantly increased use of the at-grade pedestrian crossing." I think that's a, that's a good point, right? If we're putting in a, a shopping grocery store that's now closer than any other grocery store, and you can walk to it, I think the idea is you might walk across, even if you don't live over there. Now, some might be, live over there, just stay over there, so it's the same amount of crossings, but some may go back and forth, same with restaurants, or if there's a gym, things like that. So I think that's a good point. So, uh, why don't we, could we get a comment on that from the applicant? That doesn't matter, where are you?
Again, for the record, my name is Matt Keeley, a traffic engineer with VHB. Uh, just to address that one specific question on the pedestrian crossing, just wanted to remind people that our analysis, uh, assumed that the pedestrian crossing was called every single cycle. Uh, so that basically means that every time someone pushes the button, they get to cross. And that, you know, that can accommodate the existing pedestrian demand, as well as we think the future pedestrian demand, because any time a pedestrian wants to cross, they will have the opportunity to cross during any signal cycle.
And how do you, how do you figure out whether it's gonna be one person, or five people, or twenty people, or, hey, class is starting in five minutes, and I have to get there, and it's a hundred people, cause they're college students? And does it, does that account for all of that?
Yeah, I mean, they, they're all crossing at the same time, if they're there on the, on the sidewalk, and somebody pushes the button, they're all gonna cross at that same time.
But, but I think the point. The, the scenario that the individual raised to note was that the volume of people will clearly increase if there's commercial over there. So saying you can, you can go every time you push the button, it seems to me that almost inevitably, more people means more pushes the button, which means more trips, more stops, and potentially slowing the traffic down.
Right, but well, like I said, it's, it's assuming that the pedestrian is called every single signal cycle.
Oh, so you're saying, okay, okay.
So.
So you're saying that you, that your traffic analysis assumes that every time the lights change, there's gonna be somebody pressing the button?
Exactly.
I see.
But under the adaptive things, wouldn't they get a higher space in the queue? I mean, it just seems like there, there would have to be more stoppages, it just, I don't intuitively feels that way.
Yeah, I mean, the adaptive system is gonna adjust to pedestrian demand as well.
Yeah.
Oh, so does it do that? Does it?
It does, I mean, it's more focused on vehicular movement through the intersection, but I think to, the, the issue with the pedestrian phase is, it's everyone's experience, you see people keep pushing the button, pushing the button, thinking it's gonna bring the, the light up. It doesn't work that way. The, the pedestrian phase comes up in a certain portion of the cycle, and it doesn't matter when you push it, or how often you push it, it's not gonna make it come any quicker. It's gonna wait until its time is allocated, and then it's gonna come up, and then it runs for a fixed time. And it's a fixed time, whether it's one pedestrian or a hundred pedestrians. The, the issue on the pedestrian volume number, as I think, um, the applicant's traffic engineer was mentioning, he's assumed that every single time that there's an opportunity for that ped phase to come up, it's gonna come up. So every single time it can come up, it's going to come up, is what he's assumed in the analysis. The issue of the pedestrian volume has more to do with sidewalk capacity and width of the crosswalk, uh, versus the signal's ability to be able to process it. The signal can process it, it's really, can you store them all? And that's what you see in downtown Boston. You'll see five hundred people outside of North Station waiting to cross in this twelve-point wide crosswalk, which doesn't fit them all. Light turns, uh, the pedestrian phase comes up, you know, five hundred or a thousand people cross from North Station across, heading into the financial district. It can accommodate, it's really, so the signal can accommodate, it's, can your sidewalks accommodate, are they wide enough, and is the crosswalk wide enough?
And so are those, one of the things I asked about before was mitigation after the fact, those seem to be things that you could actually increase the sidewalks, you could make the, um, the crosswalk bigger. Now, those do have impacts on traffic, you know, if the crosswalk's wide, I mean, cars are stopping further back and things like that.
Correct, right.
But at least those are some things you could do if it wound up being.
Exactly.
And then, and so like, I think to your point, and to Peter's question of, well, what do you condition, right? You condition a bond, you can, you can condition, you gotta fix it, okay? Step one could be, make the sidewalks larger, step two could be, uh, the, the crosswalk's larger, step three could be, da-da-da, up into including, okay, none of this works, put something overhead.
Yeah, the issue with you holding on to a bond is that at the end of the day, you might have to do it, and is the bond enough to do it? I know you try to structure it so that it is, it, it's better if it's performance-based than you tell the applicant, here's, if you hit this threshold, you need to do these things, and you spell what they are, so then you just turn around and say, you need to do these, cause it's in your permit.
If I could just make one more point on the, on the pedestrian crossing, it is worth noting that the Mast dot design has crosswalks on both sides of Royal Crest Drive, whereas we have a single crossing today at the Hawk Signal, but the new signalized intersections will have a crosswalk on the east side of Royal Crest Drive and one on the west side. So that addresses some of the capacity issues. Also addresses the directionality of where pedestrians are coming from and going to.
And that's part of the Mast DOT project, right?
Correct.
So that's independent of, that, that's their project, so that they're proposing
Is it okay if I just hit on some of the questions that were brought up earlier? Just in terms of a recent submission we made last week?
Sure.
So, in trying to deal with Kelly's question about what, you know, what does it mean to the average resident, we conducted sort of a high-level summary of delays. And this is before we had seen VAI's letter about the volume to capacity ratio comparison. So we did submit a letter last week that gave a high-level summary of overall intersection delays for the whole corridor during all the peak hours. And generally speaking, what that showed was that cumulatively, the overall intersection delays were less under future build conditions than they are under existing conditions. So that's one way to look at, looking at the volume.
I'm sorry, sorry, I spilt that for a minute there. Could you say that again?
So, overall, on an intersection-by-intersection basis, overall intersection delay is less under the future build conditions than it is under existing conditions. Now, that's just one way to look at it. We did it in terms of delay, because, for me, I mean, as a driver, that's sort of the most tangible thing, is how long am I waiting at the intersection? So that was how we chose to present it in our letter last week. We're certainly happy to look at the volume to capacity ratio comparison that VAI suggested. But I just wanted to point out that we have already sort of tried to answer that question in terms of delay.
Okay, no, that would be good, the study would be good. I mean, because that's good to hear, that's actually very good to hear, that, so it's very good to hear that with the future, that the projection of delays are better. But again, to the point of, it doesn't necessarily include, one, no build obviously is better than that, right?
Right.
No build is better than build in terms of, with the added capacity from the MassDOT, that's obviously better. And then, the hypotheticals, you know, in between, this isn't built, but somewhere else is built, it's somewhere in between, this is built, plus something else is built, makes it even further.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's definitely a good thing, it's better that it's not worse after no build, but it doesn't necessarily answer the full question, which is, I think, why we want those kind of numbers that we talked about before.
Yeah, I know, we just get bogged down in numbers a lot, I thought, comparing, you know, what people are seeing and feeling now, to, you know, what the full build is going to be, would be a worthwhile comparison, and that's what we had summarized in that letter.
Okay.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I think it was one piece of it. And I think I did have one question, you mentioned the average, I think it was the average North Andover resident, or typical, what is that, in your definition of how you figured out the times? I think that's one of our challenges, right?
We did not figure who the average North Andover resident is, we just took our intersections, went intersection by intersection.
Okay, this is just, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so this is then looking.
It isn't for a specific person, or address, or anything like that, it's for our study area.
Got it, okay.
I guess the only comment I would make, is this gets us back full circle to where we started, is that if you believe all of these numbers, that means the state project got so much incremental capacity that it absorbs all of the incremental traffic from Royal Crest and makes it better. And I'm not sure we can conclude that with what we know today, so it's, you know, just, it seems to me that's a bridge too far in my mind.
Pedestrian bridge too far?
Yeah, I'm off my high horse on the pedestrian bridge.
And Mr. Chairman, one more thing, just in terms of, you know, you were talking about looking at other future scenarios, just wanted to point out that our traffic study does include a background traffic growth rate, as well as some specific projects that are planned in town, so.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
It's not just, yeah.
Perfect, I appreciate that. Okay. What else? Okay, so, we did get the draft of the mixed-use overlay zoning that was put together by the zoning working group. So everyone has that, and we're not going to go through that tonight, but that is to be kind of discussed. If people have suggestions on how to go about that, certainly happy to hear them. Otherwise, we'll probably just kind of go through and do as much as we can kind of handle on any given night, and go from there. So that's what I think we'll do. If people have specific comments or questions about any particular thing, just raise them as we go. Program summaries just carried, right?
Just carried.
Okay. And then, we did have a couple of comments that came in, so I'll read those. And then I know there are some people here tonight, so if anybody wants to talk about anything that's kind of, we've talked about tonight, I think that would be helpful. So if there are any questions, guns about what we've talked about tonight, if it's about other things, I think it'd be easiest to submit something, just saying what you'd like, you know, kind of a, either an actual question or comment, or just the topic that you want to discuss, and then we can be prepared to talk about that when people want to talk about it. Okay, so, this is, I'll read first, we'll just go in order of chronological, Wednesday, November 3rd, this is from Michael Consoli, said, "I was at the meeting last night, I want to let you know as a concerned citizen that John and Peter were 100% accurate in their estimation that with the planning board initiating the zoning change, it clearly looks like they," parentheses of the board, "are back in the project. Aton seems to be trying to push this through, and many residents aren't quite sure why. Below is the planning board philosophy from the town website. I would argue that nowhere does it say that the planning board should initiate support zoning changes in an effort to help private owners. I would further argue that the planning board should be protecting open space land for decisions of the town, not initiating that land be used for a private developer. Planning board, please listen to the townspeople and protect our town from turning into a city." And then, lists philosophy from the planning board. Okay, thank you. If anybody has comments, you can add them, but not necessary. And this is November 13th, 2021, 4:37 PM. During its meeting of November 2nd, 2021, I understand that the planning board voted to be the sponsor of the article for the Royal Crest zoning bylaw amendment and the town warrant. The board did so in spite of the fact that there are several other procedural options to the material to be incorporated into the warrant. In looking through previous warrants, I find that the planning board recommended favorable action on all of the articles it sponsored. In voting to be the sponsor for the article, I believe the board may have unintentionally or inadvertently signaled to the town that it is in full support of the project and the zoning change that it requires. That is troubling, given that the board has not completed its review of the project and has not, had not yet critically reviewed or voted on the amendment. I hope that the board will continue its review of the project in fair, honest, and open discussions and deliberation." Also from, that was from Don Schallman. Okay.
Aton, I have a question. Is it okay if I ask that now?
It is.
So just a question on, a point brought up in this email about on previous warrants, that the planning board always voted favorable action for items that they sponsored. Does that have to be true? Can't we have something that we sponsor that we vote on, based on the votes of the planning board, that perhaps it is unfavorable, even though we sponsored the article?
I'm not aware of anything that would prevent that.
Okay, so that's, as we talked about before, like, the program as it is now, my vote would be unfavorable. So that's still something that we could do, even though we sponsored on the warrant article?
Yes, again, I've used the word sponsored in the past, I think it's a word that's been used in the past, so I don't fault anyone for using it, but I think it was helpful when town council came up. I'd say we initiated it, so now it's moving forward. I understand everyone's points about what that actually means, but there's nothing that, so what, again, what will happen is that we're going to go through the draft zoning when we feel that that's at its peak, or that it's ready. We send it to the Board of Selectmen, they look at it, then they send it back to the planning board. Then we have public hearings regarding it, and then we make a recommendation. So the recommendation will come after the public hearings. It could be favorable, it could be unfavorable, it could be recommend at town meeting, those are our three options, but nothing about us initiating it requires any type of vote.
Thank you for confirming that for me.
Okay. Anybody else on this? Nope, okay. Okay, gee, is there anything else for tonight? Meeting minutes, okay. Could we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October 26th and November 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. All in favor, Kelly, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Aton?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
Okay, meeting minutes approved. Anything before we adjourn? Anyone?
What about any interest from the public?
Public comments?
Yeah, that, sorry, I thought we asked about that.
I thought you were going to.
No, no, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I thought I did just before, and I didn't see anybody, so yeah, if there's.
Is there any public comment? No.
No.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Yeah, you can, you know, yeah, please.
Michael Consoli, 35 Meadowwood Road. You did read my email that I sent in, that says enough, but in listening, I live right off the corridor, the DOT project is mind-numbing, and then this adds another level to it, that the numbers just, there's no way to, the traffic studies, there's no way to give an accurate depiction of what it's going to be. And I think the planning board really needs to take a step back, maybe talk to DOT a little bit more about what they're doing. The applicant has talked to them a little bit, but I drive 114 probably 10 or 15 times a day, all hours of the day, and the students, just as number one, they cross kind of whenever they want, and that's not going to change. Oh, sorry.
Who's agreeing with you?
It's just, it's not going to change. The bridge might help it, I don't think the bridge is ever going to happen, so I don't want to even raise that false expectation. And to have thousands of students back and forth, they have parties, they have, there's a basketball game Friday night, it's at 7 o'clock, it's going to get out at 9, 9:30, 10 o'clock, kids are going back and forth, and they don't care where the crosswalk is. And that's just one aspect of it, that doesn't include the bikes that are going to be added, and the new pedestrian walkways, and stuff like that. So, I just, as someone that lives right there, I'm highly concerned, I think there's two major projects going on that are going to impact that whole area. As Mr. Simon says, it's going to change traffic to the old center, there's just too many things that are going to happen, that I don't think any traffic study is going to be able to depict correctly. So, I'd ask you to take a step back in making any judgments.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just say, so, what you're saying definitely makes sense, you know, we do have to look at the traffic and the traffic study, and ask those figures, and get as much data as we can, even if we ultimately, or people ultimately come to the conclusion that it's incomplete, or doesn't capture it, but, you know, it's our, at least our best way to make an educated decision. And it flows, obviously, you've heard comments both ways about the traffic, so, okay, thank you. Sir?
Hi, Wayne Gendron, 134 Berkeley Road. I'm not an abutter to the property, but I'm in an abutting neighborhood. 37-year resident of the Berkeley Road area. Just a couple of comments about the traffic pattern and the adaptive lights, and, you know, you've seen this used in other parts of the country, but if you're still trying to put 15 pounds into a 10-pound box, I don't see how the adaptive lights are going to work. So the whole conversation about capacity, and, you know, I just don't see how that is going to resolve the issue of the increase that might come from this development. The other thing I wanted to say, John, you mentioned that you didn't think the buses would work. You see the buses going around now, all the time, I mean, I live in the area, you see the buses coming and going, there's nobody on them. There's nobody on the buses. Last thing I wanted to say is, 2:40 this afternoon, I started to take my leaves down Sharpness Pond, and I pulled out, you know, went by Merrimack College. 2:40 in the afternoon, the traffic was backed up from Bertucci's, through the lights at Royal Crest, up to Stop and Shop lights, almost all the way to the other lights at the other end. At 2:40 in the afternoon, steady stream of traffic, just waiting for the light. I've been living in Maine for six months, so I haven't seen this, and I can just tell you, I was stunned. It's not even 5 o'clock traffic, and yet, it's just a, just a complete, I know it's only an anecdote, but that's what we're seeing. And so I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. I'm not anti-development, but I just, I think it's, when you mentioned the population density, I think that's the main thing, the impact of the population density on traffic and on water. And I'd be happy to help on water. I'm.
Well, we are doing a study on that, which we're hoping to have some information relatively soon, right? So we're looking into that. I know that was a concern raised last year, and again, you know, more of the cumulative concern. And so hopefully, you know, again, hopefully data can trump anecdotes on that, because it's hard to, it's hard to say without actual data, so we're.
So my major was in hydrology, and I've worked in the water industry for about 30 years. So, if there's somebody, or a committee or something working with the town, I'd be more than happy to help out.
The town contracted with Western and Sampson?
Western and Sampson.
Who's doing the analysis? So once that's ready, we'll certainly, you know, it'll be provided to the public, you can read it and provide any comment.
Yeah, sorry, like, one, yeah, once we get it, you know, we'll definitely discuss it here, it'll be online, so, anyone with expertise, we're happy to.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Andrea O'Donnell, 14 Sargent Street. I also want to express my disappointment with the board and their vote last week. I understand that you can make any decision going forward, recommending it, not recommending it, voting against it, but the perception is that the board is now behind this, and there were other options for the applicant to bring this before the town. Anecdotally, I appreciate what you said about this town center, not even thinking about this project per se, my husband and I coming back from Danvers last weekend, we chose to go down Johnson Street, because I saw 114, and I wasn't going to go down there again. And I said to him, you know, people who don't necessarily abut the project, may not think this will impact them, but it potentially could. I mean, all those people on Johnson Street, all those people in the center, there are impacts there that I think people are not, they're not aware of, they don't, they're not thinking about, they're thinking, oh, I don't live next door to this, so it's not going to impact me, but I think this, along with all of the other projects we have in town, do have an impact on, more broadly than people are accounting for it. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, Barbara Sur, 148 Main Street. You brought up my two most important issues that I feel, it's the water supply and the traffic. And I think the water supply is the bigger problem, even though the traffic is going to be very bad. I can also see traffic, like, going, instead of turning on 114 from 125, it might go straight into Andover, and Andover's going to get a lot of that traffic too, because people are going to think they're going to be able to bypass. But I just don't know where this traffic is going to go, because I don't see anywhere you could expand the roads, and the traffic to 93 at rush hour will be awful. But still, my biggest problem is the water. We have one water supply, and we are, I feel, overdeveloping in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Could we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, Kelly?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Aye.
All right, the ayes continue. All right, we are adjourned until?
December 7.
December 7. Have a good Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.[1737.13]